Okay, I'm going to call our village board meeting for June 6th, 2022. Order please, roll call.
Nyla Frye.
Here.
Gary Hersberg.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Joel Zitzelsberger.
Here.
And Sam Coffey.
Here.
Okay, first thing we have is confirmation of meeting compliance.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was posted in the Wanakee Tribune on 6/3/22, and the final agenda was posted in all three official posting locations on 6/2/22, and the final agenda and packet were made available as well on 6/2/22.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like pulled or look for a motion?
Number two, please.
Five, seven, and nine.
Five, seven, and nine? Okay, then do I have a motion for the remaining?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed. I just have it. Okay, number two. Nyla, you asked for that one?
Okay, the last couple minutes pertaining to board meetings have not listed the attendings present at the meeting, and I would like to know why, and I would just like an explanation pertaining to that.
So, that would be mine, and for the minutes, the minutes are from action that's taken at a meeting, not who's attending besides the official board. So, that's why I do not usually include those in my meeting minutes as part of the official record.
Okay, is there anything stating that that cannot be included?
No, there's not.
Okay, the reason I ask is I think including that is very important for a couple reasons. One, I know a person who is legally blind, who every week when the Tribune comes out, she gets out her reader and she reads through an entire paper. And the way she knows what's going on in the village as far as meetings is by reading that, and if it's on the public record, then she knows who was at the meeting. The other thing is everyone does not get the internet, so sometimes you can perhaps tell who's at a meeting by watching the internet, but everyone doesn't get the internet. And I just feel that it's been done for years and years, as long as I can remember, and I don't know why we would suddenly exclude it. It's information, and it's valuable to those people who, for one reason or another, they want to know who's at the meetings, and I think when someone makes the, takes, cares enough to attend a meeting, it should be put in the minutes.
Okay. Brian, is there any?
Well, I mean, we're starting to get into issue, I mean, I'm not talking about the substance of what you're saying with Nyla at all. This is, this is a procedural issue. I mean, I would, if, if there are certain things that the village board believes have to be in the minutes, then you, you probably need to act in that fashion as, as an entity. Not every village clerk or municipal clerk throughout the state does things the same way. There's all, there's legal requirements with respect to what needs to be in the minutes, and how things are going to be handled, and then there's discretion that's provided after that. And if, if, if the clerk or any department head or is essentially acting in a discretionary fashion based on their powers, and the board wants them to handle it differently, I think the board needs to do that directive as a, because, you know, and, and we need to put it on a, it needs a separate agenda item. So I would say, I don't really think there's anything that we can do tonight. It would be if you want to see something done differently as a board, then we would need to put that on as an agenda.
I have an additional question. It was taken off of being put into the minutes without board discussion, so now we have to have board discussion to put it back in?
Well, that would have been, so we've had three, at least-
This is the second meeting.
Yeah?
This is the second meeting that we have not added.
Okay, but I'm, but it's not required to be in there by law, which means that the village clerk has the discretion as to whether, you know, to handle the minutes, because that's, that's the role of the clerk, statutorily and within our code. So, essentially, to the extent that the same clerk or different clerks handle things differently, if you want the, something to be done that's within their discretionary power, I think that that's, and I wouldn't necessarily say that's an ordinance amendment, you know, but it's, it's a, it's a policy decision that I think the board would have to come to collectively.
Okay, thank you.
Nyla, would you like this to be on a future agenda?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
I actually have a clarifying question there. If we wanted that on these particular minutes, is that something where we could not vote to approve them tonight and have that additional information added? Is it still out there, or?
Yeah, you don't have to approve the minutes tonight. You can defer them to a different meeting if you prefer.
Okay.
I do, just as FYI, I do put the sign-in sheet, attach it to our documents as part of our records keeping, so we always have that, who has attended the meetings, as part of our official records.
Could I make one additional comment? Carla, I want to say I appreciate that you have been getting minutes out on a timely, in a timely manner. That is very much appreciated.
Thanks.
And I just want to tell you that, so.
Well, thank you.
Okay. So, Joe, you had the others. You had five? Go ahead.
Oh, did we, I didn't know if we wanted to take action on the minutes first.
So, we've already made the motion to approve the rest of the minutes, correct?
You, you've made, my understanding is on the consent agenda, you approved one, three, four, six, eight, 10, and 11, which means then I think, you know, we've talked about two, now somebody should make a motion to approve the minutes. Now, it may not pass for the reason that Joe and Nyla have identified, but I, I think it would be appropriate for someone to make a motion just from a procedural standpoint. Maybe it passes, and maybe it doesn't. Keep in mind, if you vote to approve these minutes, that doesn't in any way, shape, or form limit the discretion that you're going to have once we have that on as an agenda item. So there may be value in approving these minutes just because the other aspects of the governing that you did at that meeting get formally approved with the understanding that you're going to take this separate issue up at another meeting.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the May 16th meeting with the caveat that we will be addressing also present at future meetings.
Okay, a motion by Phil Williams. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Joe. Okay, any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed? Okay, I just have it. So Joe, let's go back to number, was it five? Five, yes.
Five, five, seven, and nine, really, I mean, they're all pretty much the same thing. They're all dealing with amplified music permits for either the St. John's Festival, Wanna Boom, or Wanna Fest. And I had reached out to Chief Kreisman to hopefully get some information about what sort of noise complaints and things that we've gotten from that. What I found rather interesting in the data that came back is that the noise complaints are not directly around any of those things. They tend to be three quarters of a mile away, so, I mean, the sound is carrying over the village. And, and I know that that happens. I live out in Meadowbrook, and I've heard, you know, I'm out in the yard and I hear the music, I'm like, where is that coming from? Well, it's a mile and a half away. So that leads me to the question of, for these sorts of things, when we have hours set to them, but we don't have anything where we're able to really measure the volume. And I know, I mean, anytime you've got live performances, they'll push the volume. I mean, it's, it's just what you do with those sorts of things. But I'm wondering if either in these or going forward, we can pursue something where we can more accurately measure what that volume level is, to hopefully be able to, I don't want to say control it, but, you know, be able to measure whether it's a realistic volume or not.
We do have a noise ordinance that limits the, and I can, I don't have it in front of me right now, I'd have to search for it, but we do, we do have a noise ordinance that the events are going to have to, would still need to satisfy or comply with unless there's an exception in there for special events. Now, I didn't know that this didn't, but there should, there should be something out there, that the question is just then that it's, it's an enforcement issue of having the staff and the ability to go out and measure it at the time that the event is going on.
And from a police standpoint, is that, I assume that that would be something that you guys would have to do, or is that measurement?
We do have a, we do have a decibel reader.
Okay.
As far as, in the middle of the larger events, that has typically not been an issue in the past.
And I, I don't want to say that there's been a lot of noise complaints, because there hasn't. It's, it's a handful that go along with these. And in the general scheme of things, approving these is a good thing. But it's just one of those, you know, if we can have a more concrete metric.
Okay.
That's, I guess, pretty much my thoughts on it. I don't know if anybody else has the same concerns or not.
I think in the past, you know, it's driven by complaints.
Yep.
And in most cases, these guys are really busy.
Exactly.
Really busy at these events.
Yeah.
To put something else on them randomly is going to be a difficult thing for them to manage, I think.
And I wouldn't want to put anything else, you know, apply any more duties to them in that regard. At the same time, when those complaints come in, that's exactly what's happening. You know, there, somebody's being pulled to go out and record that complaint and handle that, so.
I'm just trying to think with, with the events, is it possible for you to carry something, or one of the, one of your guys to carry something along?
I'm sure, I'm sure we could. One concern that would come to my mind would be, you know, I, I live in the village as well, and it's clear at night, I can hear the high school.
Yeah.
PA system pretty clearly as well, and I guess that would, I would just be concerned about how far we're going to take all of that. I'm just thinking wind and all the different factors.
Oh, yeah, there's a ton of things that come into play there.
That was going to be my comment, it's like, pretty quiet down, so, you know, these things are probably loudest, but there's definitely things all here that you might hear for a few minutes, you know, games or-
I guess I would say we could look at the policy for future.
Yeah.
I think, right now, I think there's events coming up that probably are-
Yeah.
Getting ready to go.
I agree.
So, yeah, I would say that, that we should look at it. We could look at it and see if there's some sort of solution. It's interesting that the people that you're saying are the ones who are complaining aren't close, they're further away.
Yeah.
So the, the noise there, they may hear it, but it's probably not at a level that's-
Yeah, it, I don't think it's a, yeah, it's, it's not at a level that's like, you know, oh my, I can't sleep kind of level, I don't think. But it's, it's loud enough that somebody goes, well, why am I hearing this?
Sure.
You know, a mile away.
Okay.
The only other thing, because we kind of treat them together, but on number nine, which was for Wanna Fest, on the application, they only have one date listed, and it says until 12:30, and then in the rest of the materials, it lists two days and until midnight. So I just want to make sure we've got clarification on what they're actually asking for there.
I have to check into that.
I'll answer, Phil.
I didn't see that.
Since, since that one's for Wanna Fest, I'm thinking we can potentially delay that until the next meeting?
Well, the Legion polls, I thought it, it says on here they were asking for, from July 28th to July 31st, but, kind of small. Date of event, July 29th. Yeah, so they don't have two, three days on there, probably an oversight on their part.
Probably, and, and the dates are less of a concern just because we know what the dates of that event are, but given that they're asking until 12:30, but the rest of the approval says 12 o'clock.
Do you know what it is?
I'm trying to remember off the top.
I think it's Saturday night.
Wednesday night, 12:30.
I think it's 12:30 in the past. I can double-check that.
Can I, can I clarify? Are you suggesting that every time we approve an amplified permit, we're testing, or just in general, we're always testing?
I don't know.
Okay.
And-
That's just-
I think what you're saying, it's the future, we should look at it.
We should, it's something that we should look at and determine whether that's a road that we really want to go down or not. So in light of that discussion, can I make the motion to, I guess, approve numbers five and seven?
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, call the question on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed? I just have it. What would you do with nine?
I, you know, it's, you can table it if you want, to, to answer the questions that have been raised. If I understood, I'm sorry?
I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay, there you go.
So, do you make a motion to table?
I will move to table number nine to probably the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Phil. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I just have it. Okay, thanks, everyone. Public comments, is there anyone here who would like to make a comment, if you're on or off the agenda for this evening?
We have, the first one is Robert McPherson at 1703 Alexandria Court.
Good evening, directors. I'm here tonight to give public comment on the proposed public comment policy, specifically to address Section D. I will start by playing, I have two pieces, but we'll start with one piece of audio here, which I believe I'm allowed to do.
Tonight, I hope that we never have a public comment that any board member has ever attacked again, and I, I feel badly that I didn't cut it off. I should have cut that off, and that's my responsibility, because you shouldn't have had to hear that, granted. Everybody's entitled to their own opinion, and we have free speech. Tonight-
So, that was March 1st, 2021. That was a comment that was directed towards me. I'm not going to play the other clips, I think I did have to load where I was pretty much defamed by the village president and comments where I wasn't allowed to defend myself. So if it is the intent of the board to engage in viewpoint discrimination, which is what this sounds like, I, as constituent, will be more than happy to litigate this with the village. As the comments period creates a limited public forum under the First Amendment, courts have ruled that the only restrictions can be on place, time, and manner, in a viewpoint-neutral way. You can ask the village attorney if you need more explanation or relevant court citations, because I only get two minutes here. Unless a comment is disruptive to the point of causing this board to be able to, I'm sorry, to be unable to conduct business, you should not seek to engage what will be blatant viewpoint discrimination. I amend the rule before you waste more of our taxpayer money in litigation. Thank you. Thank you.
Maria Pat, 1000 Wexford Drive, Wanakee.
My topic is no mow May, and from driving around Wanakee, a lot of people enjoyed that. And I'm one of them, so I love my grass grow, but I did talk to my mowing contractor, and he said no mow May is a great idea to get the pollinators going, but if you have already engaged in treating your lawn previous to that, it isn't going to matter, and it isn't going to help. So I just shared that this evening, that if you've got somebody who's already killed your weeds and your dandelions, they're not going to keep growing during no mow May, and you may as well mow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Heimbecker at 306 West Third Street, Wanakee.
I oppose any policy change that limits the people's voice in the village. I would like to remind all that are considering this, that you are representing your constituents. This policy limits what your constituents have to say and how it can be said. It even limits what your trustees can say in some cases. I liked that we could email in and ask to have comments read. It's been a good way for trustees to hear from us in a timely manner before voting on something. This has been the policy since I started attending meetings years ago. I always knew that this was a way to let all my representatives know where I stand on an issue. Please continue with accepting public comment emails up to one hour before the meeting starts and to read them. I would also like to remind you that COVID is still a thing. Do you want people here who are sniffling and sneezing showing up just to have their voices heard? Or do you wish to continue to have people be safe and have access to our local government? I was a caregiver for my mom. There are many nights I could not attend, but was able to write and have my comments read. I'm not sure who was proposing this, the administrator, the attorney, the clerk, or board members, but again, I remind you that you are here to serve your constituents. Please vote no on these changes.
Thank you.
Linda Ashmore, 114 South Street, Wanakee.
My topic is the public comment policy thing, too. The first question, when a new policy is introduced, is why? I heard the reason is to more closely align with the school board, because other village boards don't read written comments. The school board and village board don't need to have the same policies. Village board meetings have not had the disruptions that the school had, and the school board does attach written comments to a board book, which is available on the internet up to one hour before their meetings. That way both the public and board members see what was submitted. We don't have that here at the village. I looked at other municipalities, and their meetings start, their village board meetings start between 6:30 to 7:30 typically, so they are easier for people to attend. I don't like the change to no, allow the, to no longer allow the written comments submitted via email to be read at the meetings, and this is due to timing. Agenda packets come out Wednesday or Thursday afternoon, and so it doesn't allow much time to read the packet, and if you have a comment you want to make sure all trustees are going to see, prepare a written comment and submit it by early Monday afternoon. I might not have the time to send something until late Monday afternoon. Trustees also may not have the time to read them right before the meeting. Public comment becomes the only way to ensure board members hear the opinion. The reason I do public comments is because emails to some trustees are not acknowledged, so I know that this is the one place all trustees will hear my thoughts. Taking away the ability to have written, emailed comments read takes away citizen input. In the past, written comments submitted to the village clerk up to one hour before the meeting were read, and that was even before COVID. In the past, emails with the subject line "public comment" or "public hearing," please read with the topic, was sufficient to get them read. For example, if there's a new development or zoning change in my neighborhood, and I'm physically unable to attend, then I could still have the ability to weigh in at the public hearing via email. The proposed Zoom or call-in is nice, but it doesn't work if you are caregiver, don't have internet phone access, or are working them. The option of emails being read works well in those situations, and they are easily forwarded to trustees versus dealing with the paper copy. The change to allow three minutes for public comment is good, two minutes is rushed. I would like the sentence removed from the form that prohibits trustees from engaging in back-and-forth discussion. The clarification on this spot is better than both sides going away upset.
Thank you.
Rebecca Rhoad, 1605 Shenandoah Drive, Wanakee.
Hi, I've never been to a meeting, so I thought I'd come and see what it's about. I emailed the board before the last meeting, again, about the, the public comments policy, because I didn't understand why it was going to be limited possibly to just saying yes or no on an issue, which doesn't really give the person any chance to comment at all. So, so I sent the email, and I did get a vague but polite response, but I felt like I really needed to be here to maybe express those feelings a little bit more strongly, because it didn't seem like anything happened. And so that, to me, it seemed even more important that public comments are allowed to, to, to be read from emails, you know, from whatever way that people can communicate them. And that shouldn't be taken away. There's no reason to not allow us to speak our minds as village members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Ashmore, 114 South Street, Wanakee.
Looked over the proposed policy for public comments, and to me, it seems like a solution in search of a non-existent problem. I've heard that the reason for the policy is to keep meetings from running long. I've been at plenty of board meetings, and usually there are no public comments at all, or just two or three. The proposed limit is three minutes per speaker, which is an increase, and the only good change I can find in the proposal. That would make the public comment time under 10 minutes for most meetings. On the rare occasions when more citizens are motivated enough to come before you can speak, they would expect to be heard, and I think you owe it to them. If the meeting runs long, then it's important, and it's supposed to run long. When you ran for office, you asked for the responsibility of listening to and acting for your constituents. I'm opposed to the policy statement, policy statement, reading, "Board and committee members may not engage in comments or questions that are posed to them." I have seen some back-and-forth on various occasions here, and it has been good government, in my opinion. I've heard the village attorney give advice to the board, which seems to be the origin of the policy proposal here, but it is contrary to Wisconsin Department of Justice's guidance for municipal public meetings. DOJ says limited dialogue with public commenters is fine. The only restriction is that you cannot take action on any issue not on the agenda, which is just common sense. I don't see any reason why someone's comment can be, comments can be read for them by staff if they are in attendance, but not if it is emailed in. Treating people differently depending on whether they can make it to the meeting seems to limit accessibility. I have heard board members expressed disapproval when village issues are kicked around on social media. When you make it more difficult for citizens to communicate directly and publicly with you, then you are pushing them to the channels that are available, such as social media. I'll make one quick comment also about the comments made about people very near to the various festivals in town not complaining about the music, and I would suggest, based on past experience, a lot of the immediate neighbors go out of town for the weekend to avoid the noise. We're going to be doing this for the St. John's Festival, which is a block and a half away from us, but we got to town in June when that comes up.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Lubenstein, 405 Augusta Drive, Wanakee.
My public comment is actually about chickens. I would like to approach the board to look at an amendment to Code A-1E, Executive Agriculture District, to allow residents to have chickens at their properties. I know that there's a couple of arguments against, there's a couple of arguments for. What I would say is there's a lot of our surrounding areas that do allow chickens, Dane, Lodi, even in Middleton and some prairie, they allow chickens, and Madison, they allow chickens. I think that there's for the food shortages and the supply chain that have actually had a lot of issues, being able to have that would be a really good thing for our community. I think that also the farm fresh eggs are a lot better for the consumers. There was a comment brought up when I was speaking about this in my neighborhood, and they said about predators, and how they really like foxes in the neighborhoods, and they said, you know, there's, it's not that there's never been predators before, and they think that, and I live in Six Mile, the fox is very awesome to us, and the hawks, and the owls, and there is ways to get around, still having chickens and hawks and foxes. So, I would say I'm also a mother of two, and I think good food is great, and I want to teach my kids responsibility and standing for themselves, and I hope the village will take the time to think about the request, and thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Mary Ellen Kearney, 317 West Main Street, Wanakee.
I think continuing public policy discussions in this manner is so helpful, because it's the only time that we know that every single person on the village board gets the same message, because sometimes people are absent, sometimes you might encounter someone on the street and talk to them about it, but you don't know if that's ever shared. And this way, it's a public record. It's been shared, and it's so much easier to do this, and it emphasizes the feeling of community much more than having everything hashed out on the internet, where lots of things are false, or might be more critical and less positive. At least we feel we're a part of it this way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Miller, 321 Fairview Circle, Wanakee.
I just want to say that I hope we can have a really good communication with everybody, and I'm here to listen to all this, and I think we should have good comments and communication.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would have a public comment that would like to speak? Okay, then move on to licenses and permits. Brian, do I need to read all of them, or how does that, how does that all go?
We don't have to read that much.
Okay. So-
Good. Can I give a little summary quick?
Yes, Carla.
These are the annual alcohol and licensing renewals for on-premise and off-premise sales, with each establishment here in the village Wanakee. We would just request that you can make one motion for all of them. The first one is the change of agent, so that should be done separately, so two through 22, we do it together. And we would just ask that, that in the motion, a conditional approval that all monies owed to the village are paid prior to licensing being obtained.
So, it looked like there was a recommended motion for all of two through 22, and those, I think, contain that-
Yes, it does.
So if you have a motion that essentially approves the staff recommended motion for all two of 22, then there's a lot of, some of those, there's language, you will capture everything that's in the recommended motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Because there was no staff recommended motion on-
Par bar?
Par bar?
Yep. So it's going to be the same motion, just with the- So it's going to be the same motion, just with a premise?
Okay. My concern would be is if we have a motion that approves the recommended motion for each one, and there isn't one.
Which one is that for?
Um, for par bar. I missed.
Do you know what number that is?
Twenty-two.
That's the last one.
Oh. So we could just.
So maybe make a motion for two through 21, make, one by itself, two through 21 with a collective motion, and then maybe further discussion on 22 where we can offer a motion, if that makes sense.
So let's take our one first. So do we have that motion?
I'll move to approve Brian Renton as agent for Quick Trip, doing businesses. Quick Trip, eight, three, two.
Okay, motion by Erin Moran. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Ayes have it. Then we have two through 21. We have a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the alcohol beverage license application. I'm not sure if I'm reading the right one, though. Is it the same for all of them here?
Mm-hmm. With their premise.
This was the staff recommended motion one.
Okay, I got the wrong one from here, huh? Okay. Okay, staff recommends approval of renewal application, subject to possession of current seller's permit, payment of outstanding liquor bills, and payment of all outstanding bills and/or monies owed to the village.
I, I think the recommended motion may be different for certain ones, so if, for two through 21, if you just want to make a motion to approve all of the licenses issued for numbers two through 21, consistent with the staff recommended motion, you would capture everything that's in this.
So moved, how's that?
Okay, so we have motion by Garrett Hertzberg.
Second.
Second by Erin Moran. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Ayes have it. And then twenty-two.
I will move approval of the renewal application for par bar, subject to possession of a current seller's permit, payment of outstanding liquor bills, and payment of all outstanding bills or monies owed to the village.
Okay, motion by Sam Kaufman.
Second.
Second by Erin Moran. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Ayes have it. Next item up. Sorry, everybody, I have a herniated disc in my back right now, and right now it's saying it doesn't like me, so give me a second here.
Do you want to, do you want to take it for recess?
No, I'll be, I'll be all right in a second here. So, all right, next item we have, um, the discussion on our public comments.
Sure, I'll quickly kick it off. Brian's prepared with some feedback and information that can carry us through some more conversation. But I want to start by answering the question, why are we talking about this? There is no policy. We're creating it. We didn't have one pre-pandemic, we don't have one now. What we had, and I would say still have, is uncoordinated, misunderstood, and uncommunicated practices. That's our situation. And when we went through the pandemic process and made alterations to the way in which we engage the public in public meetings, that brought all of that to light. And now the task in front of you, village board, is to decide what you want your policy to be. To do that, I started by contacting peer communities throughout the county to find out what practices were on, on public comments, uh, and the reading of written comments. It's a very rare practice, but I did find a couple of policies that helped shape some of the design of this. I took into account some of our practices, I took into account, into account feedback I heard from the board at your last meeting, as well as public comments that we've heard, to craft some modifications to improve upon draft version one, and now we're here looking at draft version two. So I wanted to very clearly make it undeniable what, what we are doing here and why. It's not in search of a problem that doesn't exist, it's in search of creating a policy so it can be very clear for you, for staff, and for the public going forward. I hope that's clear. So with that, Brian, I want to turn it over to you so you can, I know you've prepared some comments to address some questions.
Well, and just to piggyback off of what you just said, I mean, I think it was at the last board meeting where Sam correctly pointed out that we've had some inconsistencies with how we've handled certain things, and especially when you have inconsistencies, that's why you establish a policy, so that you can avoid inconsistencies in the future. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to try to address the public comments first, and then to the extent that you, I have some thoughts on the policy, because my belief is a lot of the policy is probably consistent with what we've done now. I think there's definitely some things you'll want to talk about, but, um, but so one of the paragraphs, and we had, we had a comment about this, so if you look at paragraph D of your, the policy, this is how we would run it right now, and this is how other municipalities handle it. I've, I've actually seen Fitch, in the city of Fitchburg, them have to cut off somebody because there was personal attacks on, on, in that case, an older person. Now, there's no, we all understand that governmental bodies, the public should be able to come in and talk about policy issues. There's no question about that. I'm not aware of any municipality that allows personal attacks on elected officials or staff members. Keep in mind, you guys don't make personal decisions, you make decisions as a board. I certainly believe that if somebody walks in this door and starts attacking one of the board members, we have the ability to cut that off, notwithstanding what the gentleman said. Now, if you have a concern with paragraph D, the, and I know you're not going to agree with what I'm going to say, then don't have public comments, because you have to be, just because you have public comment, doesn't mean that you can allow to come, someone to come into your meeting and say whatever it is that they want. Now, we might want to, you know, add, you know, tweak the language a little bit, we might want to make it more clear that when somebody's exercising their discretion to, you know, say you can't talk anymore, it's be, in the second sentence, it's because somebody violated the first sentence. But you clearly have the authority, and I've seen it happen, to cut people off from personal attacks. Policy discussions, no. People get to come in here and have policy discussions, but not personal attacks on you, and then there can even be other things that we've all seen, you know, whether it's hate speech or things of that nature that you certainly don't have to allow. Um, you know, let me just, and, you know, part of that comes from, I have two paragraphs from the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law Compliance Guide that I'm going to read for you. The first one is just general language. "In general, the open meetings law grants citizens the right to attend and observe open session meetings of governmental bodies, but does not require a governmental body to allow members of the public to speak or actively participate in the body's meeting. There are so, there are some other state statutes that require governmental bodies to hold public hearings on specified matters. Unless such a statute specifically applies, however, a governmental body is free to determine for itself whether and to what extent it will allow citizen participation at its meetings." Essentially, you don't have to have public comment. Once you allow for public comment, you get to make reasonable rules, and as allow, as long as you apply those reasonable rules to everyone equally, you are going to be in compliance with the law. Now, I'm not suggesting don't do public comment, I am telling you that it's your legal right to not have public comment on your agendas. Um, I, I, you know, I'm certainly willing to go, I did kind of go through the, the policy, I didn't draft this, so I don't have any authorship issues to, to, to stand up for, but a lot of the stuff that's in here, I think, is consistent with what your existing non-written policy has been. Now, there's probably, there's some things that you're going to want to, I think, discuss. I've heard comments about emails, I think that was one of the ones that, or written comments, that, that Sam identified as some inconsistencies, and I think he was right. So those are the ones where I think you really want to have, um, a policy, so that you have clarity on what's going to happen at the meetings. But I won't do that unless you guys want me to. The, the last thing is, so this is the other section of the paragraph of the compliance guide that I'm going to read to you, and it addresses another comment that was made by a member of the public, and there's some really important clarifying language that I'm going to read to you at the end. But it says, "Although it is not required, the open meetings law does permit a governmental body to set aside a portion of an open meeting as a public comment period. Such a period must be included on meeting notice. During such period, the body may receive information from the public and may discuss any manner raised by the public. If a member of the public raises a subject that does not appear on the meeting notice, however, it is advisable to limit the discussion on that subject and to defer any extensive deliberation to a later meeting for which more specific notice can be given. In addition, the body may not take formal action on a subject raised in the public comment period unless that subject is also identified in the meeting notice." So I have advised you routinely not to discuss public comments with people. There are reasons for that. You can't act, you can't have a meaningful discussion, and you can't give your opinion as a body. So what I've seen happen in situations is somebody makes a public comment, a board member or older person wants to respond to it, they respond to it, another older person jumps in, they respond to it. Now the attorney has to cut it off, because if we have further discussion, we are now having a discussion as a body on an item that was not on the agenda, thereby violating the open meetings law. And now the five or six people who didn't have the ability to state their opinion when the first two jumped in are mad, because the first two got to jump in and potentially agree or disagree with the commenter, and nobody else got to speak. Now, if you would let, I mean, you can do that if you want, but you can't have a meaningful discussion, you can't act, and you can't give your opinion as a body, because as soon as you do that, now we violated the open meetings law, because the item that's being discussed is not on the agenda. If somebody makes a comment on an item that is on the agenda, typically what we do is we say, "Thank you, we will address that item later." I think this gives people, the, the chairperson, the ability that once we get to that agenda item, if the people who are still made public comment want to state something further, we have allowed the back and forth at that point in time. So there's a key difference between items that are on the agenda and items that are not on the agenda, and then there's some discretion that's provided to the chairperson if we get to an item that's on the agenda, if we're going to have further back and forth. I guess, I, you know, I have other comments that I could give you based on what's written here, but I'm not sure if you want me to go any further at this point.
Board members' comments, questions?
I guess, uh, this policy is going to be effective for all of the committees, correct?
Right.
I think that's just an important thing to keep in mind, like, that, yeah.
Well, maybe to clarify that question with Brian.
Not every committee is going to have, you know, necessarily everyone in the room that might, you know, be able to help have a conversation, or you to cut them off at appropriate time, you know, it does become more of a back and forth.
Let me rephrase the question. Is it, if they create this policy, is it legally required for this specific policy to apply to every other governing body of the village boards that they've created?
Well, the, the way, the second or third sentence of the first paragraph says that it is going to apply to the village board and committee meetings, unless otherwise stated on the meeting agenda or announced. I mean, I think it's going to become cumbersome for you all if, you know, somebody takes it, you know, utilizes that unless-otherwise language, because now you're going to create confusion of, okay, we have a general policy, but now for a particular committee, we're not going to apply it. I mean, I think that that would be prob, I think that would create more problems than, than it would solve.
I guess I just meant like, I hope.
Oh, I agree with you that you're right. I mean, I basically.
My own take too, like.
There's.
Not just thinking of this exact board and meetings, like, all the other setups we have and all the other kind of variety of.
That's why every municipal attorney I know gives the same advice at me, which is, when there's public comment, don't have a back and forth for the reasons that we've discussed. If it's an item on the agenda, then maybe you can get to it later, but if it's, certainly if it's an item not on the agenda, there's not, I mean, yeah, you can, maybe there can be one or two comments, but you can't deliberate and you can't act. And so that ultimately leads, leaves certain people out of the discussion and makes them angry. Um, that's, again, that's my advice. I read, you know, the, the, the language in the AG Compliance Guide gives you a little flexibility, but practically speaking, I mean, it gives you a little flexibility in what's being written. Practically speaking, I don't think it gives you flexibility.
I mean, it seemed to me at one point when we were, we'd always have, uh, public comment at the start of the meeting, if everybody wanted to make a public comment, and then we switched to say, well, if you have a public comment, or if you have any comment on the, on the agenda, and it started to mix up. Um, I liked it much better before when public comment came first, when they had something on the agenda they wanted to speak to, they waited to that moment on the agenda to make a, you know, a comment about it. I mean, it kind of confused the issues, there might have been a public hearing that made a minute comment, it's just.
So I think, I think what you're saying, just to correct me if I'm wrong, is before we had public comment on items that were not on the agenda, but the public doesn't necessarily always have an opportunity, unless it's a public hearing, to make a comment on items on the agenda at that time. Now they have an opportunity to make a comment.
I believe that is why the change was made, for that exact reason, because it was only later in the meeting during public hearings where people would have comments.
So we've, we've been expanding.
Expanding and opening it up more, okay.
Then they don't have to sit through a whole meeting.
Well, they get an opportunity, everybody gets an opportunity to speak.
Well, to be clear, one of the things that we've done is, I mean, and this is, this is important for taking the minutes, is if we have items that are on the agenda, so we have a public comment and we have a public hearing, if somebody has comments related to the public hearing, they should wait to make those comments during the public hearing, because that's a statutory record that we need to create and maintain, and it gets very confusing for anybody who's taking the minutes to have comments made in the public comment period that are supposed to apply to the public hearing. That's why you want to keep them separated.
Correct. And I would add, if staff are supportive of that change, and I don't, boy, it was three years ago maybe when we, instead of only items not on the agenda, when we included items on or off the agenda. So, it, but, but they were all front-loaded into that, into the public comment section, but we opened it up for on, on agenda items too.
Other comments, questions?
And I found that to be the norm in, around us.
Sam, any questions, comments?
Uh, in regards to subsection H, where it talks about the spokesperson, I think the only potential issue you might get into with that is, look at the airport association, for example, somebody may live on the runway, but they're speaking about their home, not the airport association, that can get into sort of a gray area there, and I think that's a line, I mean, I don't think it'd be a huge problem, but I think that's a line that we could remove.
Can you say which one that is again?
Uh, section H, the last sentence, where it says, "If a group with similar views on an issue wishes to speak, the meeting chairperson may request a spokesperson be selected to address the board or committee." Because, you know, that can be read in other ways, like, well, it'll, it can only be the spokesperson from that group that can speak, for example, with how that's worded.
So you just take that out, so?
Yeah, just take the one.
So in other words, the whole group of people have their opportunity?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
I, I kind of like it as, it's a may, like, they may request, I think it. Leave it open. There's a, yeah, if there's a group of neighbors, let's say, and they don't all want to speak, but they all want to be there to show their, you know, visual support, if they want to deter, I don't know. I guess that would be the same, but.
I get Sam's point, and maybe it's, maybe it's a reword to say, "We might encourage."
Yeah.
Should a group care to speak collectively to assign a spokesperson? I'm following you, Sam, and may, maybe it's a tweak in the language.
That wording sounds fine, as you say.
Okay. Okay. Nyla?
Um, under F, written statements, that covers a whole lot of different things. A public comment is different than email. Um, you know, it, right now, my thinking is, is we may, you could possibly get an email, and it could be requested to be read, or it may not be requested to be read. Um, you know, a public comment is not the same necessarily as an, an email. And then on G, "The meeting chairperson may read out loud or direct village staff to read aloud written support or opposition by the public to, to listed public hearing items." I've been to meetings where somebody will say, "I'm not in support or opposition." That happened with the, the air, the, the pilot, or the pilots in the airway. I think people, it needs, they, they need to be able to voice their opinion other than support or opposition. And you answered my question as to why you're looking at changes and why now. But I see communication in the village in three different ways. There's communication between the board, there's communication between residents and board members, and there's communication between residents. And if we are not allowing written, or a written public comment to be read during meetings, there's a big gap in communication for all of us. I feel that Chris has done a great job, ever since I've been on the board, and even before, I've watched many meetings throughout the years, Chris has always done a great job conducting a meeting. I know that Brian and Todd feel that we need a policy, but I question, if we really need a policy, we, I think we're doing great the way we were. Another one of my concerns is, uh, public works, we had a gentleman come, uh, at a meeting, I think it was last year, who had a lot to say, and three minutes was not enough for him to say it. And it, what he, what he. And what he, what he conveyed was good. And I would have had, I would have hated to cut him off after three minutes. So I do have a concern about that with committee meetings. I mean, he's, he was the only gentleman that came. We had time. I wanted to hear what he said. And for me to cut him off at three minutes, I, I think it would be uncalled for. He'd been to many, a couple of meetings over the years and he did have concerns and I wanted to hear him. So, and then my other, another concern, which doesn't have to do with the policy, but how this came around. It, it started because the comment sheet, what was written on the comments sheet was changed. A board member happened to see it. This occurred without my knowledge. I don't know if other board members knew it was going to happen. So, you know, when, when Chris decided a few years ago to change the meeting time from two to three minutes, that was discussed by the board and approved. And I don't know why this, these changes weren't discussed by the board and approved. Perhaps it doesn't, it, by law, it doesn't need to be done. But I think there are many things that if you want trust in your community, you need to have it out in the open. It can't just happen all of a sudden and, and think that people are, we're going to grow trust. It's important for us to hear our citizens and, and, and listen good and, and listen to their perspective. Don't let it go in one ear and out the other because that's not doing any good. We have to hear each other's perspectives, so.
That's where I'm at.
Okay. Phil, any comments?
No comments. Eh, maybe so. I don't think we've changed anything. I think we're going to talk about it.
They tried to change something.
No, no, they put it on the agenda. So, back and forth. This is back and forth. We shouldn't do that. But I kind of support the fact that when people come in, they get to register and say, "I want to speak," so that makes sure they're not overlooked. So asking them to register that they're going to speak, I think is, is kind of a good idea. They don't get overlooked. Also, once they, all the people that have registered have spoken, if somebody speaks up and says, "Is there anyone that didn't get to register that would like to talk?" Invite them to speak then is a good idea, so. I, I, I disagree that we've changed anything. I think we're talking about changing it, or we're talking about what changes to make at this point. Is that correct? We haven't changed anything. Okay.
Well, can I offer a clar?
Yes.
And they changed it back with this.
I don't know what changed on the form, if anything changed on the form. What I do know that is on June 21st, 2021, I made the decision on the agenda language at an administrative level to specifically solicit and request public comments for, for reading into the record. That was the moment when we went back to in-person, but there was still a litany of public health rules and th, th, this situation was awkward to do a good job of coordinating public meeting without hybrid technology in place for us to engage people virtually really well. I made that decision to do that. I didn't ask the board to do it and I did it with the effort to engage the public as well as we can. When the county lifted the extent of its rules, at that point, it seemed appropriate that the language that used to be up top talking about all the health concerns like we did on June 21st was an element to the agenda language that we then removed. So I, I want to be, be clear and be honest about what changed, why and who did it. I, I personally thought it was a good decision to implement it and there seemed like an end date in relation to the public health orders. So that, that, I want to be really clear about what happened and when.
Thank you.
Just now to respond to a couple of your comments. When I, just so I understand, when I read A, that is, if someone has a public comment and they come in and fill out the form, they're either going to be able to speak or they're going to be able to turn it over to the, the chairperson and, and it's going to be read aloud. So I think that's consistent with what you want, right? So then, so then I guess going to your comments on, on G, essentially are you asking for, so, but that's during the public comment section. G deals with public hearing. Are you saying essentially you want the same rules to apply? Now, I guess my question would be, is that for somebody who has filled out a form here or even just emails?
Oh, e-mails where they request it to be read. Not everyone wants their emails to be read and we need to accept that too.
And can. Let me just share why I modified the policy this time as, as opposed to version one that you saw. And I don't remember who said it on the board or if it, if it maybe was a, several of you shared the sentiment and I, I heard a variety of sentiments. But along the lines of, if, if someone is going to put the effort into getting to a public meeting but isn't comfortable standing in front of us to, to give their talk, we should be happy to read their comments for them. That, I, that's, I sort of absorbed that when you had your last meeting and that's why I wrote it the way I did. So it, it, it does not allow emails, emails to be read if requested if the person making the request isn't present. But, but we can definitely have a discussion about how you might want to implement something differently.
Go ahead, Erin.
Because a few things, and I don't know how much back and forth, but it says in here, and I think that's been the general policy of, like, I was on that Powell Works meeting, like, the chair of the meeting can grant an exception for a longer time. And it does say that here, I think in one of them, H maybe? So, situations like that. For, I mean, we could play what if all day with, you know, every scenario of everyone trying to get their comments in. I think having something on record, I mean, this says draft, we might not be ready to make a decision, but if someone doesn't even have an email, can they come in, record something for three minutes and that's listened to? I think, I mean, it's valid. I want us to be accessible. I, like, would love us to really accommodate people. I think it's also fair to say we could open a, you know, can of worms of just like, can someone email, what if they send an email, the video link? Are we supposed to play the video? Are we supposed to attach everything they send? That kind of thing. So I don't know that we're even ready to make a decision on this. If there's, we're all going to kind of have little what ifs of, what do we do in every scenario we find? Because I, I think for me, I'm seeing that's what I create. The meetings I chair, the committees I chair, like, I want to be able to effectively, like, maintain our policy, not just have it be the village board meetings, if that's really what we're going to do with every committee, every body we govern, having the same policies.
Joe?
I, I like where you're going with that. I, I had made a note here that this is a policy that can be changed in the future. It's highly unlikely that it'll be perfect on day one. It may not be perfect ever. But it's, it's something for us to be able to work with and, you know, move forward on. My gut feeling is that we're not in the place with it yet where we want to, you know, approve it, but, but we can spend some time and continue to get there. This is, I, I believe this version is better than what we had first, you know, first draft. So maybe a few more iterations and we'll be in something that's pretty usable.
I'm good with you taking time on this. I do want to tell you that when I, when I talked to my fellow managers around, all but one said, "We don't have a policy, but please send me yours when you have it." And I say that, I say that, I mean, this is, this is a matter that we all, all governing bodies grapple with. I know the school district has gone through work to get to where they are now, which I think it, you know, they've moved towards, you know, the, a preferred practice on their end too. That, that's the journey we're on.
So I think I've got everybody but me, right? Do you have a second?
Linda and I had a nice discussion today and, you know, shame on me over the years, early on, you know, you receive emails from constituents, constituents, you read them and I got into a back and forth with this individual. And at that point I said, "This will never end." And so there are emails that I get that I read, but I never respond back to say, "Hey, thanks, I got your email." So Linda's point was, you know, sometimes we send emails and we don't hear back from the board members and we don't know if they've read them, which I thought was a great point. So it'd be nice to have a policy that said, "Hey, if we get an email, we should all respond back and said, 'Hey, thank you for your comment.'" You know, at least so they know that we've gotten the comment. I know the school board, Linda had talked a little bit about the school board, what they've done. Something about how they include written comment in some other type of form. I can't remember how that, what you called it, Linda, but it would be nice, I think, village-wise, to have the same type of system almost that the school has, so people that live in the community know when they go to a school board meeting or a village meeting, it's the same, you know? Hey, if I send an email in, hey, I know it's going to get read or they're going to read it out loud or it's going to be attached to the minute meetings or however it works, to me that consistency, and I know where, where our, you know, village board is separate, but it would be nice to have some consistency, I think, for the people in the community so they know it's the same.
Okay, so I've given a lot of, a lot of deep thought to this and I received, I think, seven emails. I don't know how many you did, but I would say I received about seven emails in regard to this topic and most of the emails were, were in regards to email and emailing the board and giving us the information and making sure that that's read into the record. So that's where I see some people that are having, I'll call it anxiety, about having that portion read to them. My question, Brian, is in reading them, what's the difference?
I'm, I'm sorry, reading?
If we read the emails that we receive, the issue, where Nyla brought up actually was somebody who's emailing saying, "I would like this read" versus an email that's stating their opinion on something to us. Well, so where do we draw the distinction? Because it's going to be that time where we say, all right, those that are requested to be read and then there's going to be the people that send them but expected them to be read. So I, I, I just feel like there's a trap in there somewhere for all of us as board members with, with that. That said, I have always been and believe that everybody's opinion should be shared. I've, I've been consistent all the way along the board, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, directed at me or one of you, I've always allowed people to share. So I'm just, the email portion is the most diff, I think that's what's causing most of the anxiety in public for those that are watching and, and listening intently.
So I just, let me just, so I think that I've heard.
Let me just finish that.
Okay.
So as we're taking these emails in, we as a body are making those decisions about the different topics. So people email us on a public comment about things that we're working on. We're the ones making the decision. So to me, we're getting that email to make that decision. I'm trying to figure out, is it our responsibility to make sure that everybody before we make a decision gets that information and how that can happen? And if not, what we talked about was we get those email comments, we get them before the meeting. We've already read them, so that's going into our psyche of what we're doing for making a decision. What is the benefit of reading it at that point?
So let me, let's go back to before email. Elected officials would get, and it probably still happens, but you would get pulled over at the grocery store, you'd get pulled over while you're walking your dog. People would want to talk to you about issues. When you would come to a meeting, something, sometimes you would hear people say, "Hey, like, somebody pulled me over when I was walking a dog and they made a point on this topic and let me bring it up." And other times, you'd hear something and you'd, 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 you know, listen to it, you'd respect it, but you wouldn't bring it up at the meeting. I don't think that emails are any different than those communications, than the communications that would happen. Sometimes you would choose. Now, it's, it's, it's up to you whether or not you want to read. I mean, there's multiple options that can happen with emails. I, I see, I see a clear consensus from you all on the comment forms. People show up and, and, and I'm going to say something here that may be inconsistent with the policy, but what I've heard board members, I think universally say, that if somebody is at a meeting, they're going to be able to talk or they're going to be able to hand in a form and ask a staff member or elected official to say what's on the form, whether that's a public hearing or a public comment. I, I think I've heard everybody agree with that either at this meeting or the previous meeting. So the, the distinction is, okay, what about emails? Now, one thing that you're going to, if, if you're, if you're going to read emails or if you're going to put them into the packet, okay? I think we're going to want to be clear to the, to the individuals as to when that is going to be chosen. To Nyla's point, sometimes people send emails that they want to be written, some, or read. Sometimes they don't. I would take that a step further and say, well, if they want it to be read, then they're probably be okay with that going in the packet. If they don't want it to be read, then they probably wouldn't want it going in the packet. So the emails create a complexity that the forms do not. Because when we receive it, we don't necessarily know whether or not it should be read aloud, if that's the choice that you make, or if it should be put in the packet or both, if that's the choice you make. I think to the point that you said of what's the, what, what's gained is, I mean, I, I go back to pre-email, when you would have these conversations over the phone or individually. You would make choices as individual elected officials as to whether or not you wanted to bring those issues up when you got, when you got to it. If you happen to choose not to say, "Look, our policy is we're not going to read this stuff or we're not going to put it in the packet," that's not going to prevent any board member from saying, "Hey, I got an email on this topic and I want it, let me read, you know, I'm not going to give the author because they didn't say whether or not they wanted it read, but I think the point that they're making here is a good one and I want to share that with you as we have this, that discussion." And I think you can go, you can go multiple ways on all of these different issues if, if, if we're going to. But I would just say, if we're going to do something with the emails, we're going to have to set up a process to make clear of, the, the author's going to have to decide what's done with it within the parameters, whatever you set up. And it's going to have to be clear that if we put it in the packet, we don't have to redact their email address because that's going to create a whole level of additional work for administration if we have to redact email addresses.
And the school does not do that for the record.
They don't redact?
No, they don't redact.
Okay, your question, you know, questioning what, what's going, what the impact is of reading emails out loud. It provides communication to the rest of the residents who are attending the meeting. That's important. Residents need to realize, hear other opinions. Perhaps they change their opinion, perhaps they would view things differently. But sharing that information, resident to resident, I feel is part of the communication process. That's why it's important for us to read information that people ask to be read during public comment.
Nyla's comment back there is the seven of us, the seven of us who get that information make the decision. Why is it important for that person?
Because.
Why is that? I don't understand.
I can't.
Yeah, we're not going to go back and forth.
No, back and forth.
And we shouldn't. I, I think.
We can.
Yeah, you guys can have a discussion.
You both have your intents of, of how you feel about it.
So go ahead, Gary.
No, I just, I mean, we get the information, we make decisions on policy and that's what our job is to do.
Correct.
And we want to listen to everybody's comments.
Except, except we're trying to comb out people who for one reason or another can't attend the meetings. There are many people who can't attend meetings.
How, how are we combing them out if they send us an email that we read that we put as part of our decision?
If they're asking for it to be read, we're making the, or, and then we can decide whether we want to read it or not. We're, we're making decisions that we shouldn't be making. If they're, it's asked to be read, it should be read.
I think we do that already, like, if you read an article or you, exactly what Brian was saying, if someone stops you at M&amp;M's and said, "This is how I feel about something" and you said, "I've heard people talk about this," like, you already are making that decision.
What I'm trying to say is it's important for citizens to understand what, what the communications are.
Okay?
And, you know, I'm not, in terms of this whole thing, you know, we're going to be getting new technology in this room in what, four months or something like that? Let's wait, see how that works and then come back to this.
I was already planning on rewriting this again.
Right.
When that comes, that's going to be a whole, it's going to be new, it's going to be better in, in so many ways and more engaging. But I didn't, I didn't, I didn't want to leave undone something that, you know, it is, is touchy and concerning and important for those four months. So, but I'm willing to follow your, your lead on that. and important for those four months, so, but I'm willing to follow your, your lead on that, Sam and others.
So, one of the other challenges I have, texts, emails, whatever, people are sending to us, a lot of times context, and what you get from that is very different. What, what's trying to be stated to you versus how you interpret it, because it's in writing. If you, if you talk with any organizations, when people are having a conversation face-to-face, it's pretty clear what we're talking about. When you're getting texts and emails, it's not always as clear in, in that. And, that's my argument for where people want emails, is because that's an opportunity for us to read that, to get clarity from one another. But this policy allows us to do that if we want to. Correct, Brian? Or Todd? I, I mean, that's...
I, I think there is some, I mean, I guess that...
It's interpretation.
It's, it's, honest, I mean, I, I agree that you can wait on this. I mean, and essentially, you're gonna have to trust staff on how we're, I mean, right now, the policy is you're not gonna read written statements, as far as I'm aware, at, during public comment. So, that's, that's, I think, how things would be applied as we move forward. We've had the, Sam pointed this out, I agree with him, we've had inconsistencies with respect to public hearings, of when things have been read and when things have not. I mean, that's one of the reasons why you have a policy, so then you don't have the inconsistencies among, whether it's village board meetings or different meetings. All that being said, if you wanna wait, I think the issue's gonna become, and then I have to defer to Carla and Todd on this, do you think that you have enough guidance right now for, let's say, that five, five or six month period, where before the video and other things are gonna be coming in, where we, we know enough about how the village board wants to operate, so that we're gonna be able to be consistent, even if we don't have a written policy?
Okay, I have a question, then. Okay, I don't know what topics are going to come up, or issues, or, I don't have a crystal ball, but if I, if there's a topic that comes up, and six people send me emails, will I be, be able to read each one of them? Two at the meeting?
I think you are right now if you wanted to. Uh, uh, so it's on the, so you're saying it's on the agenda?
Right.
So we, we have, uh, somebody wants to do roadwork on a particular street, and whether it's at a public works committee meeting, or, and you get emails from folks, I think that right now, even without a policy, you'd be able to say, hey, again, to me, it's the same situation as the, it's, it's just, instead of one person pulled you over at the grocery store, six people, let me, I think everything that they said to me is relevant to the decision that we're gonna be making as a body, so I wanna take a little bit of time and share the information that I have.
Okay, so, then, what if I get an email that I don't agree with, and I don't read it?
Same situation as to what you had with the grocery store. Somebody came up to you and made a comment and said, and you're like, well, I'm gonna listen to them, but at the end of the day, I don't, I don't agree with what they're saying, you have no, at that point, you had no obligation to share that information with your other elected officials at the meeting.
But I don't see how I can pick and choose what I'm going to convey.
Sure you can, you're an elected official. That's totally within your authority to do. Now, you may choose not to do that, but it is without, without it, I mean, we always get caught up in now the changes with email, but it's just a communication, the same way that people communicated to elected officials before email. And I promise you that there would be times when people would say something to an elected official, and they would not share that with the body, and they had no obligation to.
Okay, that leaves me with another question. If I read the email at the meeting, would it become part of the record?
Well, so, to be clear, the only time that we have, so, the only time that we quote, we have a record is for a public hearing. Otherwise, we have meeting minutes. Now, to your point earlier, where you had made a, made a comment about, hey, we wanna put on the list of people who are there. Now, that's certainly something that the village board can direct if it wants to. I would never add, say that the village board should have a clerk, keep meeting minutes, so that somebody has, makes a comment, and then we have to write down exactly what they're saying as part of the comment. And to me, that's more of the, you know, it, it, the email that you read is, is part of the record to the extent that it's part of the discussion at the meeting, but it's not gonna be indicated in the meeting minutes. Nor should it be, in my, because now you're asking the clerk to start, first of all, to do way too much work, that you, basically, you're gonna have a stenographer at a meeting then, to capture everything. And, one of the things that we no longer do, that we used to do at Plan Commission, is, it's one thing if somebody checks the public form, and they say, I am opposed to something. Then, my understanding is the way that Tracy will do the public hearing record, is she would say, we received seven public comments, three were opposed, two were in favor, and two didn't say anything. Before, she would try to interpret some of the comments that were being made, and then we would get complaints about the person who made the comment, saying, you didn't actually capture what I was trying to say, which at that point, it's like, you shouldn't be getting into that. If they mark the box, we put it in the meeting minutes, otherwise, we don't attempt to characterize the positions that people are taking.
So then you don't put it in the minutes, anything that they said at all?
No, you, you, you put in, you put in the minutes that we had 22 people speak during the public hearing, seven were in favor, eight were opposed, and 10 did not provide a position.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I am going to throw something out, just to see your thoughts, since Sam put the idea of, let's just wait until we have our technology and see how things go. I would say, let's not do anything with this policy until that point. I will read all comments, emails that come in, at this point, up until there, and if that changes things...
If they request.
If they're requested, if they're requested. So all emails get read, and then people who are obviously in, in person, their comments will be done as well. Now, one thing that I have to, I feel like I have to address is, Brian, when people, when we're having a public comment, is it still your position, we should not be responding during that time?
I don't think that you should, because of the problems that I've already identified.
And, have you been consistent with that, since the very beginning you were here, for public comment?
As far as I'm aware. I cannot imagine a scenario where I've, especially because we only recently made the change of allowing for public comment on things that are on the agenda. Again, there is a distinction there, you can potentially have a back and forth once you get to the agenda item itself.
So, so to be clear, during public comment, though, we should not be getting into a conversation with the people that have brought it up, nor having a conversation amongst us about it, at that time?
Correct, now...
If it's something on the agenda, later is when we would have that opportunity.
Later, because you, you run into the problem, if you start having the conversation during the public comment period, even though it's on the agenda later, now your discussion on that topic is getting bifurcated based on what's going on during the public comment period, and when you get to the agenda item.
Okay, so, I wanna be clear, from a contextual standpoint, during public comment, during election time, if people come in that are running for office and start attacking other board members during that public comment section, where they're not allowed to respond in any way, making statements, is that something that I have authority?
Well, I would say this, to the extent that somebody is coming in and making, making claims on policy decisions, and identifying votes that people have made on policy decisions, I think that that's fair. To the extent that somebody is personally attacking someone, and it doesn't have to do with a policy decision or a decision that the village board has made, then I think that you've crossed that line between the policy discussion, which is certainly fair game, and a personal attack on an elected official that doesn't have anything to do with what the board, the decisions the board is making. It's, it definitely can be a gray area in, in, in certain spots, and quite, yeah.
So, my belief is, these are all colleagues of mine on the board, they all have their own minds, they can make all their decisions. But in a meeting setting during an election, I don't believe it's the right place for during public comment, where they can't respond for somebody to be allowed to come in to attack them that's running against them. Is that fair to not allow that?
I think that we would need to look into that specific issue before, you know, as soon as we can, so, to see if we can provide some additional guidance on that one.
It wouldn't matter who the board...
Oh, understood, yeah.
My, my thing is that you should not be attacked, and I think there's wording in here about attack.
There is. Now, again, I, I, there's, the example that I always give is to, for libraries. And to a certain extent, the, the comments made from the speaker are true. If, as, whether it's the Wankey Library, Verona Monhorab, wherever, as soon as you open the door to allow people to rent space within that library, now you have created potential First Amendment issues, because if you're gonna allow one entity in, a second entity, as long as they're not go, you know, crossing the line that we talked about earlier, like hate speech and things of that nature, you're gonna have to allow that entity to utilize the library too. So the fundamental decision is, are we gonna allow rent, the, the space to be rented? It's a similar situation with public comment, you don't have to allow it. But as soon as you allow it, you're definitely gonna have to allow disagreement on policy issues. The question becomes, when has somebody crossed that line from, you know, the, the, what is clearly protected speech on policy issues, and things, things of that nature, to things that may not be protected? Also acknowledging that this is not just a library, this is your meeting. You have, I think you have a little bit more flexibility on what to allow as part of, part of public comments than maybe libraries have in the situation that I have, because this is your meeting. How you choose to run it is within your own decision-making process. You just have to have reasonable rules and apply them equally to everyone. But we do need to look specifically at the election issue that you've raised. 'Cause I understand that it could create kind of an unfair situation for the board member who's being attacked, especially if it's a, you know, a personal attack. There, it's problematic. Policy decision, if you all vote on a particular issue, I think it's definitely fair game for any resident to come in here and point out what your voting record is.
Okay, so is everybody good with going as our policy right now, but we will have emailed comments read in until we have the change in technology in touch?
Do we need to approve, we all like the new form, that was my perception, do we need to approve that we are using that? We, we could do that now.
You definitely can do that if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, that, that can be its own separate motion, probably, I'm assuming, Brian, right?
I'm sorry?
It can be a separate emotion by itself, right?
Yes, in other words, if, if the idea is, there's, you know, you wanna approve the form on page 250 or packet, then that is, and that's, 'cause that's the form that the village board wants, that you have the ability to do that tonight.
As far as holding off until we have the rest of our electronic stuff, I think that's kicking the can down the road. I think it would be advantageous for us to spend some time continuing to work through some of these issues, because some of them are not going to go away just because we all of a sudden have technology.
Yeah, I'm just saying for, right now, Joe, we carry it till that time, and then when technology comes in, we're gonna have to modify probably quite a few things.
And we'll be able to see how the reading in is working. I like that.
But I do, but I do think, to Joe's point, there, there's some, there's some pieces of this that Carla and I can, in course of doing good government and better government, and continue some research, like, written correspondence, being able to include that as a component of our website for, for record availability. It's not something we do now, the school district does, maybe some other communities do, we can make progress there. And, you know, I think we can look at the current form and what we have here, and consider whether some, if any adjustments need to be made. The, well, the one thing this form does that this form doesn't do is, includes the note about requesting a statement to be read aloud for someone in attendance. But if, Chris, you're looking to do that regardless of whether they're here or not, someone attending can do that by just jotting it on the back of this and requesting it, so... I mean, if, if, how about, how about we set this aside for, for the month? Carla and I might have a couple suggestions, based on what you suggest we do in the meantime, and we'll take it step by step?
That's good.
And I do like Section C with the municipality, where people have to say that when they come speak. I think that's something that we could implement immediately.
We did add that, I mean, that is on the current form, yeah.
My two cents is you all agree on the form that's in the packet. I, I don't think that there's any, I haven't heard any disagreements on read, the, the, the language that's in this form.
Well, one, one item I wanna clarify, if you wanna approve the form, the registration for support or opposition is language specific to a public hearing, where our intent is to seek that input directly. So I wanna be clear that this form doesn't allow somebody to simply register support or opposition for something that isn't a public hearing. And I wanna make sure that that is or isn't what you're intending.
No, I'm, I'm more concerned with public hearings on that, you know, I'd like to know.
I think that's generally more of a public hearing thing, but, you know, if, if it's a public comment, I think somebody's gonna have something more substantive to say. Generally, now, we do have, obviously, items that are on the agenda that we're discussing now, but I don't think it would be a huge problem. We approved it as it is?
It seems we have it there for public hearings, so we can, in the minutes, say, hey, we got 10 opposed, and, you know, five in opposition, or whatever, and that's why we do that.
This is all about, yeah, you're right, this is all about the record that we're creating with the meeting.
And we don't need that for the public comment, so I don't know if you need to include it there.
Which is why we designed it the way we did.
But if people are going to fill this out for items that don't have a public hearing, and they're just gonna say, well, it's whatever that item is, and I'm in support of, what are we going to do with that information?
So, I, I think I hear what Todd's saying, so, as I look at this, so, when, so the public comment boxes are pretty clear. I wanna talk is the first one, and you have to give your name, address, and municipality. If you wanna provide a public comment, but you don't wanna speak, you want it to be read aloud, that's the fourth box. The, the second box is pretty clear, I'm gonna speak at a public hearing. And I think this is what you're getting at, though. What if you want to register your position as, on a public hearing, which is the third box, but also have somebody read in your statements? Because you don't, I mean, the question is, does the fourth box also apply to a public hearing? 'Cause theoretically, you could, you could check the box saying, you know, I support or I'm in opposition, but you also might wanna have somebody read something into the record. So maybe there does need to be some work done on the form, because if I understand your discussion, you would want that to happen. In other words, if somebody comes here, fills out the form for a public hearing, but does not feel comfortable speaking, and provides a written comment, I think I've heard everyone say, we would wanna read that.
Doesn't it say that on the form now? It says, I understand that statements pertaining to public hearings will be read during the specific hearing, under the fourth box?
Yep, you're right, Sam.
Oh, no, I, I didn't, I'm sorry, you're correct, I didn't see the public hearings there in the, in the fourth box.
The supporter opposition includes a statement, I don't wish to speak, but do wish to, wish to register my position during this public hearing, you checked that, I'm not talking, right? The next one, written statement to be read aloud, as Sam caught there, addresses that public hearing.
So, number, number, the fourth one can be, in other words, you can say as part of your written comment, I support this, here's why, and have somebody read it, read it in? Okay, well then, then you probably have everything covered with this.
Yeah, so it's...
We check all the boxes.
And we still stayed on one half a page, so, thank you.
Back to the, the scenario that I was viewing, we've got this topic tonight of this policy. It's obviously not a public hearing, but somebody could come in, look at this, and say, oh, well, yeah, I'm registering in opposition of the policy. It's not really a public hearing, so are we going to do something with that? Would we put that under public comment, that we had those people registering that way?
Oh, I see what you're saying, right? So, you, you, you potentially wanna have a similar box to check on something that's on the agenda, but is not a public hearing?
Or make it clear that that's, that if it's not a public hearing, we're not going to do whatever with it.
And that, and that's the thing, if it's not a public hearing, usually a public hearing, it's very, in, in our notice, we identify the, the core of the action to be taken, it's clear, it's yes or no, and this is the outcome. Many other items on our agenda, to say you support or oppose, just to say that, it's gonna be like, what?
Yeah.
The staff, the staff recommendation, the, the result of the discussion, I mean, it, that's where it got, that's, I mean, I fought that in my own head as I put this together, and this is where I landed, it just made more procedural sense.
I would err towards not having us, like, generalize anyone's, I think, all of the comments, just start adding perspective. So, I mean, I think from reading some of the scores, if it's just like, you write what the topic is. I think it's kind of on us to like, 'cause we're all gonna also interpret everything differently. We could say, well, that was for it, and, or that was against it, you're just kind of adding perspective, and it's gonna be how we make the decision on whether that helped or hurt the actual issue, so...
Okay, so, where do we go from here? I think that's a song, but...
Well, I mean, I, again, if you, if you, if it's, I've seen, it sounds like nobody wants to take any action tonight, 'cause everyone clearly understands that there needs to be more work. One question for you is, do you want staff, notwithstanding the fact that you may wait to make a decision until you get the updates in here, do you still want, as Todd noted, Todd and Carla could work on moving some of this stuff forward until we get to that point, so, that's one question. And you don't have to take a vote on it, it just kinda nods at this point.
So you're saying go through each one of these? So you're saying, go through each one of these and see if-
No, I don't think you have to do that, but Todd flagged a few of them that I think he had identified, that maybe it would be easy for the, there could, progress could be made over the coming months on them.
I think Todd and Carla have ideas how they can improve what they have in front of them. So I'd say, hey, let's wait till the next meeting, you know, see what they come back with.
Take a look at version three.
Yes.
Don't rush aside a gazillion things.
Then the other question is whether, I mean, you certainly, if you want to, have the ability, if you like the form, you can take action on the form itself without approving the policy, but that, that would take an actual, you know, passing of a, a motion a second and a, and a passing of that.
How do you guys feel?
I like the form.
I guess if you make, if somebody makes a motion, we can see if it's going to go through.
Exactly.
I think Todd and I would like to revise the form a little bit to make it more clear between public comment and public hearing. So I think that's, that's the distinction that needs to be made on this form. It's going to get-
Carla just had a good idea, actually.
When they walk in, when they walk in and they look at it and they're confused, we haven't done anything but hurt ourselves more, you know, just confuse people, so let's clarify this.
Do we need to vote on the form? Have we ever voted on the form?
No.
We don't have to right now.
We're just saying what-
Well, well, again, but I mean-
Say like, next meeting, yeah, I'm like-
But I don't want to run afoul of the board by tinkering without you being comfortable with that. So, I think we've got a couple of good ideas. Good feedback tonight, thank you, good discussion.
Things change.
We'll put appropriate things in front of you next, next time.
Thank you.
Everybody good? On the board? Okay. Next, we have discuss and take action on proposal for space study for the Wanakee Police Department using ARPA funding.
This will be easy. So when the, when the, when the village first received their ARPA funding, you guys essentially approved a number of projects. This was one of those. We've started to grow out of our building in a number of areas, and, you know, we've had conversations for a while now on where we can grow, whether it's in that building, up, out, whether or not that's the best layout for our growth, and we sought out this company's feedback, they work with a lot of municipalities, they put together a proposal for just under $6,500 to do this type of work. We figured it was better than Kevin Plundle and I walking around the building saying, we think we can do this. So, we're hoping, we're hoping for just a good analysis of, of what we can do in our building to create some more space, a better layout, and, and future growth that we're confident we're going to need. So, the police committee took a look at this, unanimously approved it, Joe chairs the committee, and I have to answer any questions you might have.
Board members, any questions or a motion?
I move to approve the bid from Keeny Architects for this police station master planning project.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Adam, you look good tonight.
Thank you.
All in fashion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And they even said that to that. Look at that. So, good for you. All right. Thanks, Adam. Look forward to see what, what they come up with. Discuss and take action of memorandum of understanding with Wanakee Community School District regarding a school resource officer. It's also you, Adam.
It is. That's a lot for me in one night. So as you guys are aware, we're going through an accreditation process, and one of the requirements for that is if you have a school resource officer, you need to have a memorandum of understanding or essentially a contract with your school district that lays out how it's going to be governed, how that agreement is going to work. What's in front of you is all things that we've been doing. We've had a very positive relationship with the Wanakee Community School District for as long as I've been here. I think that program is very positive. I sat down with Brian and the school district administration a couple times. This is what we've come up with, the school district has already approved it, and I would ask for your approval as well.
Board members, any comments or questions?
I'm impressed with the thoroughness. There's a lot of good stuff in there.
I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Wanakee Community School District and the Village Wanakee for the school resource officer position.
I will second that.
Okay, motion by Sam, second by Phil. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I think that was three minutes, Adam. That's pretty good, that's pretty good. All right. Thank you. Update on progress related to Wanakee Food Pantry and Wanakee Neighborhood Connection and Potential Lease of Former Library.
Yeah, just a verbal report to fill in on, on where things stand. First, a reminder of what you have done, and I'll be honest, you've really done everything we can do at this point, you as a village board. You've approved terms after multiple meetings to arrive at a point where, I think, more than conceptually, even in, in specific detail, we're really close to the food pantry. There might be a couple-
We are, we are, we are done, with the exception of, I think that the insurance companies are still, that the food pantry had raised some questions, and I think their representative is talking to the village representative, and there's language in the agreement that, you know, that the food pantry, both the food pantry and the village agree, we have to have a lease with the school district for the upper parking area. But other than that, all of the other terms and conditions have been agreed to, consistent with the last time it came before you in your discussion.
And, and knowing that we're pursuing that, that relationship with the food pantry, we've also continued steps relating to other things that have to happen on a proper, on the property to accommodate, let's say, just them in the building. That includes a few modifications to the interior structure, separating the stairs from the upper level, some modifications to the elevator, accessible bathroom improvements, and that, that scope of work on design is underway to prep bid documents for us to then consider approval when we ink the deal. Okay? So what I want to have is, when we got ink on that agreement, we can then put the bids out there to proceed with the work we have to do, so they can then move in. Bill has also initiated a work in prepping for the contract to redo the parking lot and the sidewalk improvements.
And HVAC.
And HVAC work, correct. So, that, that's all, that's in motion. The, the, for WNC, what you have done is approved and authorized the village to proceed with discussions and initial negotiation about their interested use in the upper level. And I've had probably two or three meetings with a subcommittee that WNC has to do their discovery. They have been in the building multiple times. They desire to make the move, and I can tell you that in talking to both the food pantry folks and the WNC folks, both see the potential for a co-facility to be a wonderful marriage for their functions. I, I've heard that clearly from both. The, what is being discussed now is the food pantry and WNC talking together about the parking arrangements that's going to be necessary for them to be successful. And, and, and this, this is a little bit tricky, because as you know, we've had the discussion about the upper parking and how there's some revisionary interest rights that the school district has to the upper parking 15 stalls if the village isn't the occupant of the building.
Village hall.
If village hall.
It's got to be village hall.
Okay, thanks. If village hall isn't the occupant of the building. WNC and the food pantry are together communicating to the school board about, about what they're going to need to pull this off. I, I don't have this specifics, except to know that the school board is going to be meeting to discuss this, I think in closed session, at their next school board meeting, based on the requests they received from both the food pantry and WNC. And those two parties have talked about what are the ingredients needed to make that parking and access work for them. If, if the school board and district sort of meet at the same place with WNC and the food pantry, then we have to get involved again to finalize the outcome of that revisionary interest for the upper parking. It's, if it's a leaseback of some of the stalls, all the stalls, none, I, you know, that's what's being worked through now. But once we know what, what they've sort of arrived at, then we're going to work to finalize that agreement with the school district.
Well, so the, we've, we finalized one agreement with the school district, and if, 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 if the village hall does not move there, and my understanding is the board now has ultimately decided we're not going to move there, at some point in time in the near future, we're going to have to quitclaim the parking area back to the school district. Now, because that's the agreement that we have with them in the MOU, because we're not going to be using the facility for the village hall. Now, the, the potential agreement that we would have with them, with the school district, is if the school district decides to lease that parking area back to our property for use of our property, theoretically, we should be involved in that, because it all relates back to the users of the former library site. And so, but that's going to be up to the school district as to whether or not they decide to do that, and if they do, great. If they don't, then the question I think is going to be for the food pantry and WNC, can they both or individually lease space from the former library site, knowing if the upper parking area is not available? I think they both, at least what I, the conversations I've been a part of, they believe they need that upper parking, parking area, at least a portion of it, for them both to operate there, and I think the food pantry has said they need it, even if just the food pantry is there by itself.
It's an open question as to whether either would want to make that move to the old library if, if there's no, no room to give for the upper parking lot from the school district. So again, I'm not painting, I don't want to paint the district in a, in a corner here